Okay, thank you. Any public comments or any new comments?
Just like to introduce this evening. I'm the supervisor from town of Johnstown and the Fulton County Liaison. And glad you were able to join us this evening.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay, well, make approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the March 20th, 2025 meeting. Do I have a motion? A motion by Bethany, second by Jack Wilson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Most hearing none, we'll move on to the chairman's report. You haven't already submitted your money for the foundation for the golf tournament. I would ask you to do that as soon as possible. Our next monthly meeting in May is moved up to Wednesday from Thursday because of few things that are going on. But the award ceremony will take place on Thursday, correct? So keep that in the back of your minds. And I just want to thank everybody who participated in middle states. They did a great job. I guess we got a lot of good reviews and kudos that we did a good job. And it looks like we're going to sail to getting our recertification with no problems. Am I correct, Dr. Tucker Miller?
The information's embargoed currently. But yes, it was a very favorable visit and I know that our ALO will be having a little more detailed report in section.
I want to thank the trustees who attended the meeting, trustees Wilson and Mogazi.
Mogazi.
I beg. Oh, did a great job. Oh, did a great job.
That's okay, I have a Jim.
And Jim Landry as well. Missing a beat today, you know?
That's all right.
Not enough coffee.
That was my husband, no problem.
Yeah, it's awesome. Okay, we'll move on to the president's report, Dr. Tucker Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's been a busy couple of weeks and it's, you know, from here on out, the rest of the semester is going to be jam packed full of lots of events. But more recently, as recently as yesterday, we had the visit from the SUNY chancellor in his, as he makes his rounds to all the different campuses. There was articles in, there's an article in your place that appeared in the Gazette, the Leader and the Reporter. He blasted the heck out of social media with his visit here, so that was nice. We had a good meeting with a group of students and, you know, thanks to Arlene for organizing that. There was primarily, he was interested in meeting with adult learners. And so we had a good group of those students that he had a longer than planned discussion with, which is good. We gave him an abbreviated tour of campus. He has been here before, so he was particularly interested in how we invested the money that the governor provided in the state budget last year that was tied to healthcare programs and mental health services. So and also, he was hoping to be able to make an announcement about the, you know, the free community college program that's, that's in the budget legislation this year. So he wanted to see the cyber lab. He didn't make it to our grand opening last year, so we did take him to the cyber lab. We took him to the nursing lab for visit with students and the simulation coordinator there. And so that was a, that was a nice visit. He seemed favorably impressed and stayed a little bit longer than he planned to. So he intends to visit community colleges every other year. So this is the second time since he's taken office that he's been on our campus. And so any questions about that? It was, it was a quick visit, but it was nice. We had venison for vets on campus today. That's the second year in a row where we've had, where we hosted that event, which is, you know, a great event. We also had the Montgomery County State of the County address here this morning. It's the first time that we've had that in a long time. It's not the first time it's ever been had on this campus, but the first time in a long time where they've done that. And then last night, we had a nice community event. The Harlem Wizards were here and we had a, I mean, it was standing room only in the gym, so it was, it was really a nice crowd. It is, the chair mentioned, we've got a number of events upcoming. There's, there's some listed in your packet as well. As we head into our season of celebration at the end of the academic year. There's a few items. We had a community college president's meeting this week. There's a few items that I thought it brings to your attention. Particularly focus of that meeting was some of the bills that are currently been introduced, some of which have companion bills in the Senate, some of which are just making their way through one chamber or the other. I'll start, I think, the order in which they're, they're on your, on your table. The first one is, is a bill that would provide additional support to community colleges for training of nurses. So I believe it's, what's proposed is $1,000 per semester per student in direct aid to community colleges to recognize the additional costs of those, those healthcare programs. Now, let's be clear, this is a bill that's been sponsored, it's been introduced, it's, it's in the higher ed committee, it may die there. But it's, it's something that if you have the opportunity, you know, Assemblyman Smolin is a big supporter of the college and is on the higher ed committee, he's a ranking member of the higher ed committee, certainly encourage him to move the bill like that forward. The next one in aisle is, had been introduced in the Senate and referred to the Senate Higher Education Committee. And this is moving to adopt the funding for community colleges. So the actual funding legislation for community colleges, the formula has not changed in law. It's modified each year over the last three or four years through the budget legislation. But the actual formula for community college funding has remained unchanged really since its inception in the seventies. And so this is proposing to make the funding for community colleges a permanent change in the way that it's funded. So as I know, there's no companion bill in the assembly yet, but it has been introduced and referred to the higher Senate. The final one that I want to draw your attention to, as a companion bill in the Senate, this happens through the assembly version, the Senate version's the same. This bill has been floating around for a couple of sessions. It seems to be picking up steam this session. It is a proposal that would change the composition of the board of trustees. Make it 11 members with an additional member elected from the faculty. Position with the non-voting member, but have all rights and privileges of a member of the board of trustees. This has been advanced with heavy support from NICE. On the other side, the NYCT, your, your lobbying organization and, and the president's organization have argued that this represents a conflict of interest that would not be in the best interest of community colleges in particular. That's the, if the stated desire is to have that faculty perspective, that is, that is in fact happening through shared governance. You have, you know, the opportunity to, or at least our institution certainly has opportunity in shared governance to have a voice here. So again, I have spoken with Assemblyman Smolin about this, he is aware of it. But it is, I think it will make the job of the trustees challenging if they have that, you know, that the argument is, oh, well, they'll be bound by confidentiality. Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so anyway, that, I just wanted to draw your attention to those three particular bills that, some of which seem to be gathering some steam. And, and again, I know that all of you in various ways interact with our elected officials and advocate that you see that. The counties are continuing to work through the approval process on the Student Welcome Center Electrical Distribution project. We have a contract that's, right now, we're basically waiting for Montgomery County. So they went through committee this week, it'll go to the full legislature on Tuesday. And then hopefully we can get rolling with, with that project, which is long overdue. We also submitted this week the, just with the, even though the state budget hasn't been approved, we did advance our applications for our capital projects, it's typical, so that when the state budget is approved for this year, we can get the DASNE review expedited through the process so that we can get the, the next round of projects that the county's approved last year, moving forward. Also with the Montgomery County committees on Tuesday, they approved the capital funding for the next round as well. So I don't think I stole any of Jim's thunder. I'll be able to, to give you a full report. And I do have three short little video clips I wanted to share with you this evening. John Ramaska was able to, our associate team for home management was able to get some favorable press for us and these will be airing very soon, right?
Yes.
It's going to be airing on channel 10, correct?
To the Vietnam War, the journey isn't over. We're following a group of veterans as they return here to Vietnam where it all began, facing the past to find healing. Wednesday, April 23rd at 10:00 PM on WTN, sponsored locally by SUNY Fulton Montgomery Community College. Telling the stories of Vietnam, sponsored locally by SUNY Fulton Montgomery Community College. An estimated 100,000 helicopter pilots and crew members provided mobility throughout the war zone, facilitating rapid troop transport, medical evacuation, search and rescue capabilities and more. The monumented memorial tree at the Arlington National Cemetery honors the Vietnam helicopter pilots and crew members who died. Telling the stories of Vietnam, sponsored locally by SUNY Fulton Montgomery Community College.
Yeah, I, we were utilizing the funds that SUNY made available through the adult initiative, adult learner initiative, which actually is mentioned in this article here. And so we, we applied for and received some additional funding for marketing. And the veteran and military population is a key area that we wanted to target. So that opportunity came about and we thought it was a great opportunity to give some exposure to FM.
Yeah. And then the final thing I'll mention is it is, April is community college month. And there, it, it sounds like on the 29th, the Senate and the Assembly will hold a, basically they'll issue a proclamation recognizing New York State community colleges and we have the opportunity to be there and be recognized. But it's just, it's nice to draw that attention and that the governor's willing to, to make that proclamation in recognition of, of the work that we do. Happy to answer any questions about any of those items or anything else?
Any questions for Dr. Tucker Miller? We'll move on to college senate report.
It's in your packet.
Okay, student trustee report.
No report.
No report. Foundation report with trustee Gazi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Prelo Gallery will hope did host rather FMCC Student Art Show to 2025. And they started Friday, April 11th till Wednesday, May 7th. And the closing reception on May 7th will be 6:00 to 7:30 PM. And the next, the next show is going to display, will be displayed sometimes in June until mid fall semester. Next item, the 31st Annual Golf Tournament. This year was surpassed every other year. We, we had 47 sponsor and so far they had 36, 33 foursome. Three of them is available for somebody if they want to play. And over $40,000 is they, they earn money. And this money, the all proceed is going to support a scholarship for the college in the high school students. Fifth Friday series was on Friday, April 4th. The speaker was Chris Dancy and topic was about AI, was very informative. The, oh, favorite was Bousser. And we had a very nice group and it was very, very interesting. Phase one of the turf field project is way underway and they are hoping that they're going to be ready by fall 2025. And foundation tried to raise money for another purpose for phase first, phase one soccer field. And they need $200,000 and a match for $800,000 secure. It proposed, the proposal was sent from foundation to Senator Schumer and Senator Jill Brand to, if we can secure some federal dollars. Next item is annual appeal up to date is $65,000. And please, if anybody forget about supporting foundation for annual appeal, be kind and send your money because they're counting on 100% participation of the board of trustee as well as, as well as board of, you know, foundation. Any, any amount that is possible for you guys. Just a friendly reminder. And if you check the website for FMCC or for the foundation, I'm sure you saw the beautiful picture regarding the donation that Johnson Hospital Foundation, again, was very generous, $18,000 for a Rattick and nursing scholarship. For each group, they, they spend three times $3,000, meaning three times $3,000 for Rattick and the same amount for nursing. If there's no question of me, I conclude my report, Mr. Chair.
Any questions for trustee Gazi? Now, we'll move on to finance with trustee Beck.
Thank you. You all received all of the information in the packet. There was no big red marks on anything, so it was looking good. I liked to glance through it to see the positive and I thought one of the things that was a positive was that in the students' accounts, it was noted of that so far, there hasn't been any delays in the processing of them going forward with not being affected by staff reduction in the Department of Education. So that seemed to be a plus to me when, when I read that, that that was going smoothly with that part of it for our students that are, that are taking that. The only other thing that I have is that we do have a budget transfer resolution to do. Considering the fact that I don't do the resolutions here. Have them off and is it red?
Yeah.
So the recommendation is that the president recommends that the board of trustees approve the 2024-25 budget transfers listed. And those are, if the background is needed to be given?
So I have a resolution to do both transfer on, do I have a second? Second by trustee Gazi. All those in favor? All right. Most hearing none, resolution passed.
Yeah, that's all that I have.
Thank you, trustee Beck. We'll move on now to buildings and ground with trustee Lanzaro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things we'd like to bring to your attention. Student Welcome Center Electrical Project, counties have the contracts on, on their agendas for this month and will be waiting for approval. On March 9th, there was a power outage here at the college, which resulted in several control boards being damaged and the facilities team has been working diligently to repair their systems. The paving, phase two of the paving is underway, Scott Marshall is working with CT Mail. And they received their proposal and engineering projects managed service for the next days. paving projects. It's our report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Lanzaro. Do we have any questions, trustee Lanzaro? If not, we'll move on to academic affairs with trustee Grant.
Preston. Two things that I saw in the business division. Larry Zuckerman let it go down to Philadelphia on Friday, March 28th. Visited several key sites, the Congress, Ben Franklin's home, the Philadelphia Mint, Liberty Bell amongst many others. So I believe you should contact us, I'll via email with that, update, some of the photos there. In the technology division, there's been work, I'm submitting an application for designation for the National Center of Academic Excellence in Cyber Defense. So that has been submitted and we're waiting to hear if we get that designation or not. And also in technology, they're working with external teams to build a new website for the cybersecurity program. So that's ongoing. In nursing, follow up to last month's report on the Student Nurse Association Bone Marrow Donation Screening Event that happened on March 3rd. It was a great success and they were able to collect over 60 swabs that may hopefully save a life someday. So that was really good to see that. In business, community partnerships, the Spring 2025 Transfer Fair was held on Monday, March 24th. Several transfer counselors from 36 four-year institutions. We had tables for the students to stop by and ask questions and gather information. And the next transfer fair will be in the fall. FM partnered with FMS Workforce Development Board and the Fulton Montgomery Regional Chamber of Commerce to host and facilitate a speed networking event that was right here in the building on March 27th. Forty business owners and industry professionals attended, networked and exchanged information on services and products while exploring new partnerships. It was a very popular event and there will maybe be plans to offer more of those towards the end of the year. After that, I will conclude my report unless there's any questions.
Any questions for trustee Preston? If not, thank you, trustee Preston, we'll move on to trustee Harry.
Thank you. A new student ambassador club was recently formed. About a dozen students have volunteered to join and assist at campus events and also assist the incoming students with their knowledge about become, being a student here at SUNY FMCC and what that's all about. Members of this club have already assisted in a couple of college events and will be on hand for open house, which is scheduled for Saturday, April 26th. EOP student Carlos Gorman received the Norman McConney Award for Excellence at a SUNY-wide ceremony for Students of Educational Opportunity Program who have overcome obstacles in life to achieve educational and personal excellence. On April 29th, FMCC's student or award winners or the SUNY Chancellor's Awards for Student Excellence, Jacy Lamboy Rosado, did I say it right? Alexandra Payne will attend the celebration in Albany and Arlene will also be with them. And we have many, obviously, end of the year celebrations to recognize our students coming up soon. We're also pleased to announce that the FMCC alumni and SUNY student trustee Giovanni Harvey will be our spring 2025 commencement speaker. Full report is in our packets.
Thank you, trustee Perry. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to diversity, equity and inclusion, John.
Should be in your packet, I'll just highlight a couple of things. Students of the World Club had a bake sale, that was really nice, just to see that went over well. I think it was a, a nice event for people who really need a support, a lot of support at this time. Action and Recovery was a really fascinating event too, had to do with recovery. They really talked a lot about addiction or gambling addiction too, which of course, when it rolled out online, we're going to see more of it. And for any of you had any experiences with that, you can get underwater in a hurry with that. Particularly college students that are getting acquainted with it. They really are doing a nice job with that. I mean, there had to be like 100 people in there, I thought. So that's great support for people who are in recovery or associated with people who are in recovery. One thing that a lot of us have been noticed, we talked about this at the EI council meeting, is just a basic sense of uncertainty and how that's sort of ungluing people emotionally. There's a lot more mental health issues coming up, people need a lot more support and the average person does. But I think when you're looking at the minority groups in particular, we really want to pay attention to all the support we can. We do a nice job here again. I think the Commons and the library is a fantastic place for people. The Student Ambassador Club, I really like that one too, because they could speak to the students in a different way than I can and provide the type of mentorship and leadership that are really going to be beneficial to people. One more thing here, maybe. Oh, May is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. So we'll be doing, trying to put something together for that. Any questions?
Any questions for John? If not, thank you. And we'll move on to accreditation, big one, Dan.
Yes, so we wrapped up our reaccreditation self-study visit, as, as you all know, last, last week, last Wednesday. Kind of the culmination of about two, two and a half, almost three years of, of work on, on what we call a self-study report, of which many people, including myself, have been kind of briefing you at these meetings about. So the visits seem to go well. We have a few items that kind of go, are maybe procedural as we await the commission's final action, which will be at their June meeting. Those things are really just like getting a, a copy of the draft report that the team had prepared, giving us an opportunity to respond to that, any corrections of fact. Then once those things, once that back and forth happens between the commission and the college, the official report gets uploaded, again, we get a chance to respond to that, that final report. And the team chair, the visiting team chair provides what they call a confidential brief to the commission. And that is one of the primary documents or the primary document that the commission will ultimately take their action on. Of course, we don't know what that action is or will be. But like I said, the visit did seem to go well. And again, the final commission action will be in June. So with that kind of, at least that portion of reaccreditation in the rearview mirror, kind of begin to look forward to different aspects of accreditation and compliance and assessment. So what I've, that report, that's, that reaccreditation, we were under version 13 of, of, of the So what I've, that report, that's that reaccreditation, we were under version thirteen of of the standards of accreditation. So I, in the last week, started to kind of take a look at the fourteenth edition, which is in effect now. And what comes along with with that fourteenth edition is what the Commission calls evidence expectations by by standards and some guidelines that they issue. So the next time around, they're looking for some very specific data, some very specific information. Not that they weren't this time around, but it's all like, almost like a checklist of sorts the next time around. So just started to get myself acquainted with that stuff, and will begin to reach out to the various groups, folks on campus, to just kind of start to coordinate those efforts early, get that, get that kind of in everybody's mind on campus early in this process. It's a long but short eight years away. The other thing to kind of start to consider, to think about, is the strategic planning process. So the current strategic plan will will sunset at the end of the twenty twenty six year. Again, seems like a long way away, but it's really not. We want to give ourselves plenty of time to consider our strategic plan, consider strategic goals, our mission and vision, and once again, involve the campus community in that process. So we'll begin that, the preliminary pieces of that process soon, in the near future. And then the the goal or part of that process will be to incorporate what we learned about ourselves in the self-study, and anything that comes out of the team's final report to incorporate that into the strategic planning process, maybe identify some opportunities, do a SWOT analysis, use that as part of that, right? So what we're doing well, continue to do what what they may identify that we're not doing so well, what can we do to kind of shore that up? See if there's any opportunities that kind of come to light, have come to light during that self-study process that that maybe we want to explore. So again, that will, that will start in the relative near future. And then just some other activities happening around accreditation and compliance. Part of Middle States' annual monitoring activities, they request some most recent financial information from the college and the college catalog for the last two years, so so twenty three, twenty four. That information is actually due tomorrow, but we loaded it on Monday, so so we've got that done. I'll be attending a webinar about curriculum maps on the twenty fourth of this month. Again, a webinar provided by by Middle States. Middle States also has a satisfaction survey that they ask A L Os of member institutions to complete. That's due on the twenty fifth, which I'll be completing that survey for the college. And then one thing for the board is that this year, your your self-assessment will be due. I understand in past years, that's been done through through a form. So my intention is to get that form to you in early May, so it so it can be completed and that that you folks can take a look at it, hopefully at your at your June meeting, discuss it at at your June meeting. And then finally, a quarterly President's Provost and A L O's System Representation webinar meeting that that Middle States holds for those folks, where we can hear about any up change, upcoming changes in policy, regulation, things like that. So that will be happening on May fifth.
Dan, did they give any indication, Middle States, as far as with the Education Department going the way it is, or there could be any changes as far as accreditation?
No, 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 definitely no new information since the the Dear Colleague, which really didn't have any information about accreditation in it a couple of months ago now. I think that was early February. In at at the Middle States Conference that I went to in December, there was some talk about that, but no indication of which way that may go, one way or the other.
Okay. And again, I just want to thank the trustees who attended that meeting. And, you know, as was pointed out by, I think, trustee Landrieu, how important it was that each one of us have a discipline that we contacted to maintain the whole board, to keep in contact with, for instance, academic affairs and student trustees and so forth and so on, and how important they thought that was, that we do that. So I thank you again, all those who attended. And if there's no questions, we'll move on to personnel with trustee Schumer McGee.
Now, at the end of the report, there's some, oh, some reservations and some new hires. Contract discussions are still ongoing with V S P and C S E A. And also in your packet, there is some information regarding term appointments and continuing appointments. I don't know the way to take, we don't take any action on that. But as you all know, recommendations are made to the president regarding promotions and term appointments. And there is a list in your packet that are proposed to be effective in September. So there'll be more information at an upcoming meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for trustee Schumer McGee? If not, we'll move on to policy with trustee Wilson.
I have nothing to bring forward this evening.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. We appreciate it. Under other business, I have a a motion tonight, a resolution. And Fulton Montgomery Community College Resolution, April seventeen, twenty twenty five, nomination of Bethany Schumer McGee Esquire for the twenty twenty five New York State Community College Trustee distinguished trustee award. Whereas Bethany Schumer McGee Esquire of Amsterdam, New York, was appointed by the Montgomery County as a member of the Fulton County, Fulton Montgomery Community College Board of Trustees in November of two thousand eighteen. And whereas Ms. Schumer McGee has served as the Board of Trustees Chairman from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four, and whereas Ms. Schumer McGee has provided her expertise and leadership as the vice chair of the board from twenty twenty to twenty twenty two, the policy committee chair, the personnel committee chair, the negotiation committee. And whereas Ms. Bethany Schumer McGee can always be counted on to attend numerous meetings and functions at the college associated with her responsibilities as a trustee. And whereas Ms. Schumer McGee is a passionate supporter of Fulton Montgomery Community College and the community and to the sponsoring counties. And whereas Ms. Schumer McGee has led the Board of Trustees, the administration, and college community to a higher level of respect, collaboration, and professionalism, there there be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Fulton Montgomery Community College wish to nominate Ms. Bethany Schumer McGee Esquire for the twenty twenty five New York Community College Trustee Marvin A. Rapp Award for distinguished trustee service. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby express its deepest and sincere appreciation to Ms. McGee, Schumer McGee's contributions to the Fulton Montgomery Community College and her leadership of the Board of Trustees. And have motion.
I have.
I'll second.
So moved.
So moved.
I'll buy your name.
Thank you. And we'll pass this on. And do we have any other business to be brought before the board tonight? If not, we will have a mini retreat, so trustees, if you would just hang tight. But I'll move to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor? Opposed, hearing none. Thank you very much for everyone for coming tonight.